Mike Palmer.
Here.
Bruce Calrducci.
Here.
Bill Henderson.
Here.
Jeff Colloquio.
Here.
Deborah Ducci.
Here.
Nina Pampasal.
Here.
B.J. Snyder.
Here.
Mary Betty Copeen.
Here.
Elizabeth Cox Conkerma.
Here.
And here Joe Seig.
Here.
Our manager, Laurie Cohn.
Here.
Police Chief Chad King.
Here.
Fire Chief Lucilio.
Here.
Self-identified citizens. Council, elect a Paul Fryer to the podium.
This is generally about the public hearing was held by Pendleton a couple of weeks ago. Three years ago, when we found out that Pendleton was one of the widening bridge over the creek, Bethany Church, about six feet, a couple of us, primarily the South Fayette, and Aaron and I, put together this proposal and sent it back to Pendleton, you guys, and much other people. I wanted to show you something that was emphasized at the Pendleton meeting last week. When we designed widening of the bridge, the green arrows show how we emphasized the importance.
But who's "we"? You said "we" designed.
Uh, Mike, Beth and I.
You guys designed the bridge?
Yeah, we did. Excuse me, if you want to check the records, I'll get after it. Let me complete my own statement. Okay, Joe? But anyway, we presented this concept to Pendleton people, excuse me, and many others. The green arrows showed it was important to have two arrows from Bridgeville go all the way through South Fayette, at least to the Methodist Express Building, and the importance of having two more three lanes coming from South Fayette and Bridgeville. Excuse me. Our proposal included the left turn stacking lane, included doubling the length of the... They're supposed to have two left turn stacking lanes here, side by side in front of McDonald's. And we suggested that that wasn't enough, and they doubled them back to approximately the Neil Drive. So what I wanted to emphasize to you is, the plan that we were shown by Pendleton the other day eliminated all the green arrows. The Pendleton plan primarily involved widening Charter Street, which is another recommendation we made. It primarily emphasized moving vehicles that come down Charter Street over the bridge and west toward I-79. And the other... That's been going on, as far as I'm concerned, for years. We've never been able to get Pendleton to place enough emphasis on eliminating traffic congestion on Washington Highway Corridor, to enhance and attract consumer motors into the bridge with South Fayette Business District. One other thing, this is the drawing of just the bridge. That single arrow surprised me when I saw the presentation. Only allows one lane from Bridgeville to go into the South Fayette Central Business District. You guys have to make an attempt to have that from happening. What is needed is, Bridgeville has to have two lanes, indicated in this arrow, which is right in front of the Presbyterian Church. So two arrows can reduce the traffic congestion that exists now in Bridgeville and releases it in South Fayette, plus the fact, I don't think, although already been told, a few of the South Fayette businessmen aren't very happy about having the fact that they could have two lanes there rather than one.
Bush Stop Day businessmen.
St. Clusie and others.
No one has communicated that to us. No one has communicated that to us.
I just...
Or the task force.
Well, I'm sure they probably will, pretty soon.
It's been three years. Yeah, we've had...
Three...
We've been working on this for three years.
Maybe it has.
Mike Benton has been meetings where he has seen the drawing that you saw at the Pendleton meeting, and he's been... I mean, he's here now, obviously. But he's been on board with everything that's up until...
Who's Mike Benton?
Mike Benton. Mike Benton, who you just said...
Michael Benton was in favor. In fact, I have a drawing...
You don't know that, because Mike Benton's not here.
I have a drawing that was given to me by South Fayette Township a month ago, that was done by Mike Benton, that very clearly indicated that he wanted four lanes to go from Bridgeville to South Fayette. Excuse me, I don't want to debate this.
No, I'm not debating with you.
I don't want to debate this.
I'm here to talk about something that may or may have happened three or four years ago. I'm talking about Mike Benton before he passed away, what he was on board with, and so, what he might have thought three or four years ago isn't what he thinks now.
Well, drawing, I just talked to the township officials themselves. I got it a lot...
Two months ago.
All right, but anyway, let me make my point. If you see no value in having four three lanes going between South Fayette Business District and the Bridgeville Business District, you're making a serious error. At the meeting, by the way, Pendleton meeting, there was some reference made that I suggested that this seven lane bridge be made eight lanes wide, so the two lanes to Bridgeville to South Fayette.
Make it ten lanes.
Or not.
Make it ten lanes.
Well, that's not ridiculous, but anyway.
When does it not become ridiculous?
When I hear a statement like yours.
Definitely not.
The eighth lane was to be so that Bridgeville could have two consumer motor routes getting out of our town.
We never made it. Late lane was never mentioned.
I mentioned it in personal letters and recommendations to Pendleton. That's why it was brought up at the meeting. If you remember, at the meeting, the presenter said that they considered the eighth lane, that the Army Corps of Engineers said doing that would make a big cost.
Who can serve eight lanes? Who can serve?
It was mentioned by someone at the meeting.
Not by Pendleton?
Oh, maybe, you might be right. It wasn't for once. There was a reference made by the present presenter that making the bridge wider would not be possible because it would cause flooding, potential flooding. I disagree with the concept, but we'll see. Well, anyway...
What's your point? What's the meaning?
My point is, I'll wrap it up. I think that you guys should make an attempt to have two lanes coming out of Bridgeville going into the South Fayette Business District, or emphasize the fact that Pendleton has done, even though the bridge is seven lanes wide, have taken both of the two downstream lanes and made them exclusive only to go from across the bridge right toward I-79. Excuse me. These will provide you with some facts, all right? And one other thing, this is a copy of the right to know records that I've submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Open Records for an explanation on why a voicemail, my recording of Pendleton is played here at this in this room, and this is likewise a copy of the same application to the right to know department, signed to Pendleton tomorrow. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Now, make sure you...
Okay. Council recognizes Dale Livingston.
Just here as a concerned citizen, just kind of asking kind of what the process is. That building was taken their own form, block, and then wall of the street. There's a... I think it's a hazard right now. I mean, I understand that it takes some time for a process for... But I was just wondering what the process is to eliminate that.
Just talking about this before the meeting started. Same as I was over.
Before we enter, but we had a conference call with the property owner the Monday after the building fell. In actuality, I got to call him because he was supposed to have a fence around that area last week, and as of Friday, it was not there. He has until May 31st, he has insurance, so he has until May 31st to remediate the site. After May 31st, then the borough of Bridgeville has to remediate the site to our specific portions, and then we'll move forward with...
For cause to occur.
Right, for cause to occur. So, but a fence has to be put up immediately, and we had included that in our letter, so... But you may not see anything until May 31st, but after that, we'll be on board and ready to have someone committed to what they need to do. So all the debris will be taken out, the foundation will be taken out, there'll be soil placed in.
Soil placed back out because of problems with that flood zone, no filling debris is permitted to be used as backfill, and once it's all backfilled and compacted, it has to be seeded and mulched and grass can grow longer.
Yeah, it's just, you know, schools getting out, and, you know, there's a lot of potential for that to happen.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you. Council recognizes Sandra Hollage.
I'm just concerned about a couple of issues on Ramsey Avenue. We still have two houses that have been vacant for eight years, and the one was that flooded house, so it hasn't been open. There's furniture and everything in there that's still, I'm assuming, growing tons of mold.
That's what I was just talking about. I actually was just talking about that to council before we started the meeting. Victor Alston is the son of the gentleman that owned the house, and we have been back and forth, because there's nobody to cite, because the house is still William Alston's name. So I was sending for response to Victor and calling and trying to get some communication going. Well, I finally sent a little bit of a nasty letter saying, "We need you to contact us, and we need to go through the proper procedures," sir. Well, he actually did contact me. So he's making an appointment with our building inspector. What needs to happen is, we know there has to be mold in there. The building inspector needs to, he probably will go to the door and probably won't go in any further, but he needs to go up and see the condition right now. Mr. Alston thinks he's going to stay at the house, and in our opinion, it's probably full of mold and will have to come down.
I thought the second floor fell into the first floor.
Not that I know of. The pictures that we have didn't show that, no.
No, ceilings were down. And that's all just speculation right now, if I can do this. Basically, they've gotten, you know, she's talked to us.
Yeah, we have photos of what the house, you know. So anyway, they're making, they're getting together, and he's going to give him permission to look at the house. Probably what's going to happen, I'm speculating, is the house is then going to be officially condemned, which will mean that it will be boarded up and no one will be able to enter. From that point on, then, we'll try to get Mr. Alston to take it down, but usually what happens with these things is, then they become our problem. So we normally, we normally apply for funding through the county to demolish houses. What they've done now is, is they've cut the funding in half. They used to approve the 100% of the amounts, take the houses down. Now they, now we only get 15%. So probably in the long run, if we can't do anything with Mr. Alston, we'll have to take the house down, and then, maybe we're doing an injection on that.
If it does, prove to be, yeah. And we're constrained to constitutional rights and whatnot, and meantime, the house is buttoned up and secure. There's no external issue that we have of an external threat right now. We're restrained and require it to be buttoned up. Once the folks go in and they are going to essentially let them in instead of us having to go through the procedures to cause that to occur, they'll be able to basically get a solid, you know, inspection that gives them solid information on whether it's in any... Because you don't take a ton of house unless you can prove definitively that it's beyond approach. If that's proved definitively, then we'll proceed accordingly, either with the owners or otherwise this will reset. If it's not, documents to be advised. If it turns out, and then folks, we do speculate what we think the conclusion may be, that if it turns out that that house is not, quote unquote, demoed, morally versus, we need a lot of rehab, but not certified, but to be demoed, then we're constrained only to have it caused to be buttoned up and secure pending the private workout of projects. So folks, note, that's we're limited government, all of us, and that's time of those.
Okay. I just, in passing, talked to a couple of people that lived out that end of the street, and when there's a lot of wind, there's a lot of smell, and whether they say that they've been getting sick more often, whether that is from that or not, but that house is fine to have mold issues.
Let me interject.
In the very least.
Based on personal knowledge, coincidentally, because my sister happens to live directly across from that house, she's very much been well aware of the fact was how her son is down, because it's also in the north across the street. They would have been worried, no, my sister would have let them know if they had smelled anything, that they've gotten, we've gotten no smell of it from anybody else.
Well, I haven't gotten anything. As far as odor complaints or anything like that, I've gotten high grass complaints, that type of thing, but as far as any odors or anything coming from the house. We just were tired of going back and forth, and I just couldn't get him to respond, and then, by some, I don't know what made him, I guess, like I said, I just had to be a little more aggressive with my lips.
Okay, good. The other thing I have is the water down by the railroad tracks. We now have a family of docks back there, because there's still a lot of water. I don't know. We haven't had luck with the railroad cleaning up. Yeah, we need at least spray for the summer, but it would be nice if the railroad would dredge it.
We've requested that the railroad do something without the years, but in really, in looking at how much property the railroad owns and probably how many, how much area they have that's probably in the same condition as probably impossible for them, we certainly will go down and spray it. We have a certified plug guy.
Okay.
That we can go down and spray it, so.
All right, thank you. We want our two dogs.
We'll make sure the dogs are there.
Yeah. They used to enjoy each other.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Minutes. Motion for a council regarding the minutes of April 9th to 19th regular meeting as submitted. Bruce Calrducci.
I'll say it.
Bill Henderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2018-04, motion for a council regarding resolution number 2018-04 as per Pendleton requirements, 1.10114, signs banners across state highways. Resolution doesn't make intention of the original work, places one banner across State Route 15 to be installed May 16, 2018, and remove June 18, 2018, for original day on the avenue celebration to be held June 16, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Bruce Calrducci.
Second.
And Joe Costo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Billis. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the May 2018 bill list. All those... We have Joe, Joe Rucci.
Second.
And Bruce Calrducci. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payrolls, motion to the Borough Council for the payrolls in May 18, 25th, and June 1st and 8th, 2018. Bruce Calrducci.
Second.
And B.J. Bott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Michael Reports. Motion to accept and pay any commission to the April 2018 real estate tax collector report. All those, Joe Rucci.
Second.
And B.J. Bott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the March 2018 financial report. All those, Joe Rucci.
Second.
Joe Costo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the April 2018 police report.
So moved.
Henderson.
Sir.
Bruce Calrducci. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the April 2018 zoning report.
So moved.
Bill Henderson.
Second.
And Joe Costo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports. Administration.
Move forward.
Finance, Joe Rucci.
Other than the normal expenses that we paid throughout the year, or throughout this past month, we started paying a few of the expenses on the building, like the nice paint job in this room, as well as the concrete work that's going on in the front. We also had to pay the insurance company, gave us the money for the scoreboard that was damaged last fall, and we had to pay that bill, and thanks to the Public Works for helping the VA install, or in the process of installing this scoreboard, it's greatly appreciated. And we collected $8,000 in the past due taxes, but we still have $54,000 pending, so I'm sure that fund process is continually on the board's office. I think that's all I have, though.
Thank you, Joe. Parks and Rec, Joe Costo.
Parks are looking good with all the rain leaves they have, and they're all nice and green. People seem to be enjoying them. Last month, Lori and I walked through all the parks, checking them out. They're in pretty good shape. A bunch of smaller things, which Public Works will be able to take care of. One thing that we noticed, the playground equipment is close to 20 years old. They're holding up relatively well, need a little touch up on the paint. Like, last year, we had a couple of bits on the edge, too. Things are so old, they don't make the parts anymore, so our Public Works has had to advocate something. So, I'm not saying this year or next year, but probably somewhere down the line, we only keep the parts, and we may have to start looking about placing things. They a lot looks great, right now, but it's pushing 20 years old, so it could be time...
That's all I have. Thank you, Joe. Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We bust the Public Works, we bust the concrete in the front of the police station, remove any railing at the police station, turn the order on at the parks, mulch, stray weeds, battle repair, clean up trash from the street, clean up Pennant, Washington Avenue, clear the street lights in Washington Avenue, put up a scoreboard at Charter Park, cut grass in the island, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it's the maintenance that Public Works does, it shows. So I have a long list here, but it shows on the eye of everybody how we maintain Bridgeville. I believe we're doing a good job. Public Works doing heck of a good job, as a small group we have. They really work hard, and it shows their work to be done properly, and that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Nina. Public Safety. Mr. Anderson.
On the Department Chief's report, I have nothing for the...
Mayor's Report. Matt Copeen.
Mr. President, thank you. We had some complaints about the women's club being torn down. The pastor came, two of our, we met with our borough manager, and he said the building inspector told him that the building should be torn down because of asbestos, and so they're going to create parking lot there, and they think that that will be beneficial for them, that will take some of the cars off of the avenue, and hope that they will make the residents feel better about not parking in front of their homes. I was contacted by Jeff Kraus from his regional marketing director for Fresh Time, which is opening up at Great Southern Shopping Center on June 12th of the 9th, to be part of their grand opening ceremony at 3:30 p.m. And he stated that he had spoken with our borough manager in regard to doing something for our Bridgeville on the Avenue Day, and then he hopes to do some other partnering with us. We also have a flyer from the Methodist Church. They have programs that will be going on until October in regard to Listening for the Future, a series of panel discussions about issues in our world that need to be heard in order to move towards the future. Stories about opioids and mental health, and this month, on the 19th, they have a lesbian gay panel discussion to be held on CD. That the other programs are put on our both sites, so that you will be able to, and they all will start at 7:00 p.m. And I have a letter from the Bridgeville Community Food Bank, addressed to the Bridgeville Police Department Chief Chad King. I, the volunteers, and especially the recipient families of the Bridgeville Community Food Bank are thankful and blessed from the generosity of our local police departments. Your multi-jurisdictional food drive was amazing. Our pantry shelves are overstocked, and we needed to find a few other places in Bethany to store all the food that was collected. Wow. Many thanks to all the officers who made this food drive such a success. Bridgeville Community Food Bank is an all-volunteer mission to the needy families within the Charter Hills Valley and South Fayette School Districts. We operate with donations that come in. During our March 17th distribution, we assisted 180 families. Have peace. Tim Anderson, coordinator of the Bridgeville Community Food Bank. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'd like to interrupt that. It was really cool that the VA asked you to throw a pitch, and you threw the pitch better than played a few other celebrities.
That was a good idea.
Although that was pretty cool.
Where did I say something like that? Police Chief Chad King.
Thank you, Lieutenant President. Just a few quick things. We have a Memorial Day parade coming up, so probably about a week in advance, or at least four or five days in advance, we'll be passing out the obligatory no parking restriction flyers for the parade route, and for the staging routes also, the side streets. We have Click It or Ticket campaign starts later this month, carries into June, so make sure you obey traffic laws, and of course, wear your seatbelts. And last but not least, I talked to John Carney from Traffic Systems today, and hopefully sometime this month, we're going to get the mast arm replaced at Washington Station Street, the one between Grace Towne and Mary Hall of Cape. It was supposed to be delivered today, but the truck was MIA, so we don't know where it's at.
Did he explain the drawing that you had?
I don't know, even going to get into that. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Solicitor, Paul?
I have nothing to add to that.
All right. Could you hear it for a second?
I have nothing to add to that.
Fire Chief, Lucilio.
Thanks, Mr. President. You guys have my report for last month. Again, we've been very busy in the service. Also, we'd like to thank everybody that came for the cash bash a couple of weeks ago. They had a good time. I think everybody there had a good time. It was a nice night. Again, thanks for the support for everything. Again, like the chief said, we got Memorial Day coming up.
Historical society.
Yes, sir. You guys never had to be here if I could, then I would have been here.
Good.
Bake sale. We had a bake sale on Thursday and Friday. If you missed it, which I think most of you might have, we are still taking donations to help, I'm sure, the fact of all the things that we're doing, our painting, our... Have you been over to see our new brands? You all need to come over. There're double dentures. There's one my height, and then one for all the people. So please come over, walk it, check it out. It was a wonderful thing to have done. You'd only have been crying for 30 years. Also, I want to invite you to the last Tuesday night of the month. I'll have to check the calendar on this one. It'll be down at the Fire Hall at 7:30, and it is the early, early history of Upper St. Clair Township. And then, the second Tuesday of June, 7 o'clock, over at the railroad station, you're all invited. We're going to talk about George Washington losing the battle of Fort Necessity in 1755. Also, we will be... We will be in Community Day. I just haven't gotten the check over that we are participating. However, I'm going to a big family wedding that weekend and I'll be gone for seven days. They're having too many parties. Anyway. Seriously, you're right, Captain. If you could really ham away slowly, gently, constantly, Pendott, to do a four or eight-lane highway going from Upper St. Clair straight across to I-79 on the new highway, then why would we have to worry so much about what's going on on Route 519? It is a worry. But I object to certain things. And when I'm coming up to Station Street Hill in the left lane and the car across the street is going to come and pass me by, the car right behind him couldn't wait and he came around him and he, and I'm tired of seeing them also go through red lights. I wish we had the money for policemen to stand up there and write tickets. I have to get money, I know that. The other thing is the speeding. I know it's everywhere, but it's getting worse. There again, if we could afford more policemen, we could do something about some of that. And I think citizens would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here from the library. Planning. Borough Manager, where to call?
I, the library, report if you have any questions. And just to note that Community Day is June 16th from 11:00 to 6:00. Our office sent out approximately 186 letters requesting donations. And they've become members that this will really help people out. And the community has been working very hard to get everything together. So the banners and the signs of votes and.
All business? New business?
I don't know.
Hello, you doing here? Ruth? Seconding?
I'll second.
Bill, all those in favor?
Thank you, everybody. Next.